All right, good evening. Welcome to this edition of the Ashland School Board Regular Session. Let the record show, we have three directors present at the moment. Dan Ruby will be arriving shortly, and Jordan Rooklin is busy with some city council business this evening, so she will be joining us as soon as she can. So, we will start with our land acknowledgement. Milo?
We acknowledge that the sacred land that we live and learn on today belongs to the Takelma, Shasta, Modoc, Klamath, and Umquah peoples. We honor and acknowledge the traditional owners of the land we now call the United States. We recognize the Native American peoples' continuing connection to land, place, waters, and community. We pay our respects to their cultures, country, and elders, past, present, and emerging.
All right, thank you Milo. All right, so first up, we will have the adoption of the agenda. So unless there are any changes, I will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I move that we accept the agenda as submitted.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda. So similarly, I will just briefly go through. We have the approval of minutes from the last regular session. We have our monthly personnel report, enrollment report, intern program coordinator and AHS Athletic Coordinator MOA, Community-Based Instruction Tutors MOA. And that is the consent agenda for this evening. So unless anybody would like to pull out one of those items, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay. Okay. So our first new item will be school presentation, and for that, we have W. Pugh who will be talking to us about Willowwind. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Emily Bland, and I'm the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade science teacher and the seventh and eighth grade social studies teacher at Willowwind. And I brought with me two comrades here tonight who will help me present about our firewise elective that we've been having here this fall. One of the -- sorry, let me get myself organized here. I've got a lot of moving pieces. I want to give a little quick background of why this kind of piqued my interest. We sit on such a cool property, and I always look at it trying to make use of what we have going on. And there was a workshop offered by the ESD that was all about connecting blue and green partners, community partners, with teachers, and create these partnership programs and projects together. And so it was there that I met Ben Ho, who works for the Southern Oregon Forest Restoration Collaborative, SOFARC. And we partnered last spring a little bit, and then we decided that we were going to put together an elective here for this fall. And that's where these two come in here in just a minute. So I just want to put a quick plug in for SOFARC. They do amazing work. They have a fire curriculum that's accessible for K to 12. They're working with partners, and they also have people coming into classrooms doing great things and are well-connected. These are some of their partners that they are working with and have connected us with as well at Willowwind. So last spring, we got started, and it was a lot of manual labor because we have a lot of fuel reduction work to do on our campus. And so we did blackberry removal, we did trimming, we did weed whacking, we have made some other plans. We were looking at defensible spaces and learning about defensible spaces on campus and how we assess them to create safe living conditions and school conditions. And that's what the little house picture is from. We are building structures to reduce fire risks as well. So now we turn it over to these two that we created this elective for this fall, looking at how do we be more firewise and make Willowwind more fire-resistant. And I do want to introduce these two. This is Tilden Andrews and Elsie Chen.
So part of what we did to learn about what fire is and does and how it grows is we studied what the fire triangle needs and what a fire triangle is. So there's two different types of fire triangles that add the components into build the fire. So it needs, in the behavior, it needs to have the right topography because fire won't burn down, it will mostly burn up and stay. And it also needs the right weather, and it needs oxygen, and it also needs fuel, otherwise the fire would go out, like, in a couple seconds. And it also needs heat, which goes into weather. And so part of what we did is we studied the fire triangle, and we made our own fire triangle with explanations in them, and we colored them in and made them cool. Tilden?
Yeah, we did, we've done a bunch of things like slideshows, worksheets, crafts, but my favorite probably was the live experiments. One of them that we did was the matchstick forest, where we made a forest out of matchsticks on a board that was sloped. And to show and experiment on how the density of the forest and the steepness of, say, a ridge or a mountain will greatly affect on how intense the fire is and how quickly it will move.
Part of what we've been doing as, like, infield experiments is trying to reduce the ladder fuels, which is when there's no fires, the underbrush grows and grows and grows, and when the fire does come through, it burns all of it and reaches the canopy of the trees, starting like a much bigger fire. So what we've been doing out in the field on days that it's nice is we've been trying to cut away as much of the ladder fuel while keeping the trees safe and alive, trying to do what the fire would do if it came through every now and then.
The other live experiment that we did was groups of three were assigned a type of tree that is in Oregon to make a replica of, and then we would stick that replica on a cookie sheet, put a bunch of newspaper on the bottom, and light the newspaper to replicate a surface fire. We found out that trees like a Douglas fir, which is the Oregon State Tree, I'm sure you guys already know that. It is way, it has a way higher susceptibility to fire because of its triangular shape and long, flat branches that extend almost touching the ground, so that when the surface fire comes through, it will heat up the branches and then leap into the canopy to start a canopy fire. And the Douglas fir wasn't as much of a problem until these drought areas happened, and it became way more abundant than we really needed. So we've been basically clearing away some of that stuff, too.
And I just want to chime in. Some of the things that we still have coming this fall, we had Sarah Jones come in and talk about fire or smoke impacts and how smoke behaves in our valley. We have an entomologist coming tomorrow to look at the relationship between insects and forests, and therefore fires and insects. And then we'll go out and actually look for insect infestations on our campus and look at what signs we can see, excuse me, of insects there. We also have a partnership with OSU and the Jackson Soil and Water. They have these, I want to make sure I say it right, the Student Watershed Assessment Team, that they're going to come out and create some photo monitoring sites on our campus that we will then keep recording data from in the future. They're coming in a couple weeks. And then one of the big highlights is having the Northwest Youth Corps working with Fire District Three. They're going to come and do major fuel reductions for a week in December and work with the kids also to learn about building burn piles and looking at what it really looks like to put a lot of work into the clearing that needs to happen. And our future goals, I would like to offer another elective, both land-steward-based or fire-based. We're going to team up with Ashland Fire and Rescue and Chris Chambers to actually do controlled burns, hopefully, fingers crossed, in the spring. And looking at an all-campus effort to pull star thistle or other invasives in the spring when they're not quite so prickly. But essentially trying to get the students out on the land more and taking ownership for this space with these different activities and really partnering with community organizations because there are so many, and we've gotten a lot of enthusiasm about working with us. Overall, I would say it's a great opportunity for the students to be out there and see the careers that are around us, see what it takes to really manage land, and to learn the details of being in a fire-prone region as well.
Thank you, guys, for hearing about Firewise, which is our elective, and we hope to see you soon, I guess. I don't know.
All right. Well, do we get to ask you a couple questions?
Yes.
So now you are both sixth graders. Is this a class that's open to different grades, or is it just sixth graders at this point that are taking this class?
It's fourth through eighth.
Fourth through eighth can all take it? That sounds so cool. I wish I could have taken that when I was a sixth grader. I'm a little disappointed you didn't bring one of your live experiments, because I can see why that might not have been the best idea. Anyway, really amazing stuff. Anybody else have any comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk to you about Willowwind. So I hope this is more of a conversation. I encourage you to ask questions as I go along. And we did get an outline from Dr. Hatrick, and I'm hoping that I'm covering all the points, but if there's other things that you need to know, please let me know. So we have some pictures here of Willowwind. We're not wanting to go. Yeah, that's what I've got, is giving me something else. It's not moving. I'm on the right arrow. Let me see. What's happening? I don't know. Oh, is it supposed to play something? Glad it's not just me. I wonder if it can go up here to the next slide. Can we just start over? Is that what we need to do? Or is it supposed to play a video? No, it's not playing the video. Okay. Is this your next step? Yeah, that is. So where did, you didn't use the arrow? Oh, just use the side arrow. Okay, I can do that. Okay, here we go. So Willowwind was established 29 years ago as part of the Ashland School District, believe it or not. I hardly can believe it. But I was there, and this is our 25th year on the property. So we first started at the middle school, and then when the school district purchased the East Main Street property, we moved there. And we are planning some kind of celebration. We haven't decided yet for our 25th year there. We are a K-8 alternative program that has both a full-time and a part-time program. So the full-time program is called Parentis Partners, and the part-time program serves independent homeschoolers. I don't want to just read you from the slide, obviously, but, you know, we serve students who thrive in a learning environment that encourages students' choice and responsibility. So that is part of what we are encouraging, and there you go. We have our lovely, lovely rainbow. That was a real picture. The enrollment at Willowwind, currently, we have more full-time students than we have ever had in the history of Willowwind. We also are serving, as of today, I just enrolled another 33 homeschooling students. So we're very full right now. And since the origin of the Willowwind program was in the homeschooling community, we tend to attract a lot of people that are looking for different alternatives. We have a Willowinder here. So this makes 240 Ashland students that are attending Willowwind. And I realize that when you guys get your enrollment numbers every month, they don't include our part-time students, but our part-time students are on campus, and they do take classes, and they do bring in funding. So it's kind of a balance. We also, every year, the last few years, have enrolled at least 20, 20 to 25 students that have come to us later in their education career from non-traditional educational backgrounds. So they're not coming from Ashland School District or Medford School District. They're coming from a variety of programs that they attended as younger students, and we're able to integrate them into our full-time program. Oops, I'm sorry. Education for Sustainability is one of the tenets that we really adhere to at Willowwind, which is basically teaching students to build on the knowledge they have to make the world a better place. And in order to encourage that, every year, each class does what we call a challenge learning project. And every year, they're different. And the whole point of challenge learning projects are that it has to come from the students and what the students identify as a need. And then they use their writing skills, their research skills, their knowledge to do a project that makes something better in their eyes. And I just listed here briefly the projects that we have going on this year. Firewise is one for sixth, seventh, and eighth. The kindergarten and first-grade classes have identified challenging issues that they have going on in the playground or in the classroom, and they're doing things like making signs, reminding students to take care of their things. They're making a video on how you tie your shoes to share with the other kids. The second-grade students, as part of their reading curriculum, learned about students that have struggles reading, and they've decided that they want to do a reading campaign across Willowwind, where they're getting other students more excited about reading, letting everyone know it can be hard sometimes, and they're working on that. The third-grade students, kind of similar to K-1, actually, they are going to be using their persuasive writing skills to advocate for some new play equipment from our community association, which is our parent council. And the fourth and fifth graders are currently involved in a major food drive. They're partnering with the Ashland Food Bank and have been, their goal is 3,000 items by November 21st, which is twice what they've gotten in years past. So we have a lot going on. Okay. Recent thing, awards our students have gotten. Last year in May, four of our students were given awards for the If I Were the Mayor contest, and one of them won the statewide contest. After all of the students participated in that, we invited, Tanya Graham came, and not very many people know this, but Tanya Graham was my first office manager at Willowwind. So she came, and she talked to the students, had a roundtable with them about what it was actually like, and she had read the essays, so they could ask her questions about what it was like to be the mayor. And two of our students also won at the state level an art contest for a calendar for the California, no, I'm sorry, the Oregon Agricultural Classroom Foundation. You can see their calendar. Now on to assessment data. The fun part is over. So the first thing I started with was our year-end data from the spring. So this is where we ended, at the end of last year. And you couldn't, you know, read the percentages. In language arts, our kids did very well. And I used the measures for kindergarten through second grade. I used EZCBM because I think most of you know that they don't take the state assessment until third grade. The third through fifth and sixth through eighth were both the state assessments, and the percentages who were on or above grade level were 95, 94, and 84. In mathematics, we don't have kindergarten in the mathematics measure because the kindergarten class was involved in a pilot program for the IXL, and we can't access their data now, so that's why it's just first and second grade. But 83% of them, 83, funny the same, of grades three through five, and six through eight was 69%. And you can see the comparisons also in that data compared to the state level. Our grades six through eight, we're working hard with those guys. We have had a significant number of students who have come from backgrounds where they haven't had regular math education, and so we're working hard to fill in the blanks, and they really are working hard and making great progress. Unfortunately, the end-of-the-year assessment doesn't measure progress. And science, for fifth and eighth grade, 72% versus the state 28%. Our youth truth data, I know you guys are always interested in that, so I picked the highest and the lowest for each survey. For the student survey, the highest rating we had was in the area of belonging, and the question that the students answered was are students friendly to you? The lowest rating we had, which is very interesting to us, is in the area of academic challenge. But the question that they have associated with academic challenge is, does what you learn in school help you in your life? So we're really being thoughtful about how we can draw those lines for the students. We're trying to be really reflective about that. The family survey, our highest rating was in the area of engagement, and our lowest rating was in the area of communication, in the area of teachers clearly communicate expectation for a child's progress. And you'll see a little bit later in this presentation that we have made a plan to address that also. The staff survey, the highest rating was in the relationship, basically staff treats each other with respect. And the lowest rating was in the area of professional development. The teachers didn't feel that their professional development opportunities over the last year had provided actual support for their content area. It was the question. So now the baseline assessment data for fall. So this is the data that we started with this fall, and of course, there's different measures because the state assessment we don't give in the fall. But in language arts and math, you can see where we are in terms of on or above the grade-level expectations. And all of these, we use the new assessment that we're using, which is the IXL. And we chose that, or I chose that, because we can also measure progress down the road, right? Because we're going to be using this assessment tool all year, and we can have numerous kind of dipsticks into where our students are. So my goals. So we've been asked to write school-wide or program-wide goals for reading and math and several other. I'm just presenting three. I think we had five goals overall. Basically, my reading improvement goal is that by June 2026, 100% of Willowwind full-time students will demonstrate measurable growth in reading achievement. And basically, the K-2s measuring 85% would be in low risk using EZCBM, and 85% of fourth through eighth will be above grade level, I mean, at or above grade level, I'm sorry, using the IXL. And the way we're going to accomplish this, number one, new ELA curriculum that we're all instituting and working on, collaborative PLC work. So that really works well for our staff. We meet across grade levels, teachers talk about strategies, bring assessments, bring student work, talk about it, put their heads together on what they're going to do differently to help particular students. And the other thing we do is regular achievement team meetings, which is a group, a grade-level group, intervention teacher, counselor, myself, and we're looking at where we are putting our resource support and watching the students grow and reallocating that support as we move My math improvement goal is similar, different percentages a little bit, but basically the strategies are also similar, and I included in both of them also using the IXL. We're just getting to know it, but to watch for targeted skills and use it for intervention.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Please.
Do the part-time students not take the traditional assessment?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So the homeschooling students that we serve, it's in the capacity not taking academic responsibility for those students. So they do not have to assess. They do have to assess at the ends of grades three, five, eight, and 10 through the ESD. So that's the homeschooling state law. But they actually don't have access to the state assessment. They can't take it as homeschoolers. They use different assessment tools. It's kind of interesting. So the goal, based on the youth truth feedback, you can read the goal, but I'll tell you what we're doing. So as a teacher team, we got together after we looked at the youth truth data, and the teachers really wanted to do more, to communicate more clearly to families. We also discussed that it's at our parent council, which is an entity we have of families coming to give input. And the student, the teachers have all created what we call learning logs, and for different grades, there are different ages, I mean, there are different formats. And so at least once a month, every student will be evaluating their own progress, setting their own goals, taking samples. setting their own goals, taking samples of the student work home to families with all of those pieces and giving families an opportunity to have, to give feedback and have a communication with the teachers. So we're piloting that. Last year, we started a little bit. And now all of the classes are doing that. And we'll see, we'll see how it goes if people feel more informed. So at Willowwind, we do have a commitment to continuous improvement and reflection. You know, that really is this, that process of inquiry we try and use as teachers, as an administrator, with our students. And so we reflect all of the time on our successes and our challenges. And we started off this year with an activity that had been presented to us by some people that were brought in from Learning Tree, which is the PLC gurus in the state. And we did an activity of really reevaluating our mission, our vision, what is still working, what still isn't. And the teachers, over a number of meetings, came up with this new commitment and many things they wanted to continue. So basically, this is the statement that they came up with. Willowwind emboldens students to balance their curiosity with a firm commitment to connect with ambitious learning goals while being accountable for ensuring a safe and inclusive environment. So we're going to try that one out. I hope you all come. Come visit, come see when the kids are there. It's fun. Do you guys have any questions I can help you with?
I just want to say, I hope you're, I can tell you're proud of the work you've done. And I hope that all your teachers and your families are feeling the same level of pride. It isn't just the numbers, but the look on the kids' faces that I see. It looks like a great place to go to school. And, and I love the way you tackled the, the the issue, whatever, the business of deepening the connection with, with the parents and with the families. That can only lead to good things. That's.
It's important, it's important. And hard, I mean, it's been hard, I think, for everybody, especially, you know, COVID was a blip, right?
Yeah.
But it's been really hard, but we're seeing a lot of changes, right? You just keep at it and we'll all get back to where we were. We learned some things. We should use that information, right?
Yeah.
And we have to get back into the rhythm that we had. Thank you.
Neat.
Thank you.
Thank you. I love the, the grade level, you know, the tasks that they eat grade. Selected for themselves. I think that's such a great idea. I mean, I think I know, we've seen so much about getting students engaged and giving them something to feel, you know, that they have a connection to, that they're proud of. I want to see those third graders. I bet they're all going to turn into, you know, I don't know, lawyers. It's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have a Lincoln School update with Steve Mittel.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here as always. I do not have a bond update today because nothing really has changed since the last time I was here. We continue to work through the punch list items and, and they're just small things and work through the billing to get this thing across the line and wrapped up. So hopefully, we'll, we'll stop even reporting that soon. I did want to give you an update on Lincoln. I believe the last time I presented, we had completed the shoring process. And I promised that I'd send out documentation to the board regarding the actual field report as well as the shoring process. And I included both of those in the board packet, so you have that information. We did run into a little bit of a delay during the shoring process. We realized that entire section there is hot, which means it has asbestos in both the ceiling and the floor tiles. So we've gone out to, to receive proposals for abatement. And that's out on the street right now. We should have that wrapped up by probably middle of next week and have a company under contract for abatement. The nice collateral benefit of that is we'll actually take care of the deconstruction as a part of the abatement. So by the time the abatement's done, deconstruction will also be done and we can move on to discovery, figure out what's going on there. So that's it in a nutshell.
Well, you know what we're going to ask first. Is that a significant increase in cost?
Yes. Not significant. It's going to be an increase in cost. And, and I think when I was meeting with Sheri, and I've said this to Joseph, I, I'm disappointed, but also not, when we run into abatement issues like this because our goal is to try to abate everything at some point. We want all the asbestos gone out of all our facilities. So yes, it's going to be an increase. This is why we went out to bid. We actually are going to receive three quotes and go through that process. It will exceed the $10,000 limit that we had put on this originally. And I don't know where it's going to land. I'm not going to guesstimate at this point. But I knew it would be over 10,000, so we went out and followed the bid process for that.
And was this unexpected or is this not?
Not to, not to Robbie and I. We really were pretty confident that we were going to run into asbestos in that area. It wasn't until we got together with the shoring company and saw exactly where they were going to, you know, to put all this, these trusses and all these beams that they put in place, where we could go back and look at our books and actually compare to see where they were working to what we have on file, which is our legal obligation. And sure enough, it was, it's all hot and everything they were touching is hot. So, you know, we got the shoring up in place. We did not penetrate the ceiling or the floor in doing so. And so at this point, we'll wait for an abatement company to come in and do it the certified way.
Okay.
The legal way. Yeah. And I will share the cost. I should have some idea what the cost is by next week. And I think we have a work session next week. So I should have that information or at least some idea what those estimates are coming in at by next week.
Have you heard back from insurance at all?
We've been keeping insurance apprised along the way. I still believe they're waiting to bring in their engineer once we have, once we have the deconstruction complete. They're going to bring in their own engineer to do their own assessment. And so they're just waiting for that to be done. But they've been notified every step of the way. And unfortunately, I don't, we don't have an answer as to what, to what extent they're going to cover us at this point. More to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next up, we have our finance report with Sheri Ely.
Just a couple of things of note. On the revenue side, we're not seeing any really unusual changes in our revenue. The state school fund, we did get another estimate in and that dropped our state school funding about 15,000. But the prior estimate we had increased our estimate by about 300,000. So the 15,000 loss was not a big deal to me. I do anticipate that we will receive another estimate probably either the end of November or the first of December because they're doing another rebalancing of the state school fund. They have asked people if they're seeing any dramatic changes in their property tax collections, either up or down, their enrollment, anything like that. They've asked them to turn those in and they're going to do another rebalance. So we'll probably see another estimate. And I have a feeling this year's going to be the year where we get a lot of estimates. So we'll keep our eye on that. Oh, gosh. Because then it changes everything every time you get one. All right, so that next page is just the detail on the financial. On the expenditures, again, we're tracking just like we thought that we would. No major variances in expenditures. We are watching the health care costs. That's the one thing that is kind of been top of mind. Our ending fund balance looks like it's coming in at a little bit lower than what I estimated last month, about 2.9 million. So continuing to monitor that with the revenues coming in and our expenditures. And then we are in the middle of the audit. And so I do anticipate there will be potentially some adjustments, especially on the capital projects side, just because there were so many weird things that happened last year and through the audit at the end of last year. So there might be some things that have an effect on our ending fund balance, either up or down. So I will keep you abreast of that if I see anything unusual there. And the other thing I noted is that I did include the amount of the debt service that we'll have to pay on the full faith and credit in June. And that's on the seven-year amortization. So those are kind of only the unusual things on the expenditure side. And then that's our detail by function. And then the next one is the same appropriation compliance. That's what I call it, appropriation compliance report. Nothing unusual to see there. And then I have our special revenue report. This is kind of a work in progress. I've kind of been working with the format of that, trying to align that with the awards we get from ODE for different grants and then the other grants that we get from community organizations as well. So that one will continue to be a work in progress. And then Jordan had asked about a financial on the bond. I know that Steve and HMK are going to do a more in-depth update on the bond expenditures specifically by project. But I did want to include this just so that she could see where we came in revenue-wise and where it looks like we're coming in expenditure-wise. And at this point, it looks like we have about three-ish million remaining on the bond that we can spend on other capital-related projects. So working with HMK on that just to make sure that my records are aligning with their records and that we have a really accurate look at what we are going to have left on the, on the bond that we can use for other projects.
Okay, I did have one other question that she had asked, which is, is there any time limit that, that determines when we can spend that last $3 million? Like, do we have to have it spent by a certain time?
No.
No?
No.
It's open-ended?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Sheri, also, I have a question.
Yes.
Being the new kid. Can, can that, that remaining bond dollars, can those be turned toward the project, the Lincoln School project?
It potentially could, just because it would be an improvement project. But we would have to probably talk to somebody at the state on that just because it wasn't in the original scope.
Yes.
When you guys went out to the voters. And so I think if we went to the state and shared with them the issue that we had with that building, I think that they would say that you could go ahead and use the funding for that. So definitely something to ask about.
Okay. Thank you.
Sheri, I had just a couple of questions. One was on the revenue detail sheet. Category 1910 rentals. I just saw that that was higher than projected by about 12,000, like in the positive. I was wondering where that was from and if that was a trend.
That is from one of the locations that one of the community organizations had rented. I don't remember off the top of my head which one it was. I can look that up and let you know.
No, just wishful thinking that it might be a positive trend.
I don't think so. I think it was a special program that they were wanting to do, so.
Okay.
I can look it up and let you know, though.
No problem. There were two other ones on the expense side. And it was 1291 English is a second language program.
Yes.
And just the year-to-date spent so far versus budget being so different. I was just curious, is that a lump sum payment that goes out at some point?
I will have to look that up and let you know.
Okay.
I am not sure.
Basically, same question with the category 2140 psychology services was just showing as zero spent. If I've got that correctly, yeah. Zero spent year-to-date versus the budget.
So that is probably because we are contracting out for those services and have not paid, made the payment yet for that.
Okay.
But I would have to look at that and confirm that. I don't, I don't believe the district has their own psychologists, so it would be contracted services.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
So I have, I have another question.
Yeah.
We're on that page, so I'll just stay with that.
Okay.
Right now, the, the expense page. And I'm looking at line 5120, short-term debt service.
Yes.
And I see that the number of projected has, has increased from what it was, the
Yep.
5,220, or 5,000, boy.
5 million.
I know. I want that so much. But it's not 5,220,000. So, so it's, it's increased. And I'm just wondering how so, or why? What is that about?
That's the debt service for the full faith and credit. We'll have to make a payment in June on that one.
Okay, okay.
So the 5, 5.2 million is paying off the tan.
Yes.
And so we'll pay off the tan.
Yes.
And then we'll roll that into the full faith and credit. And then we'll have to make a payment on the full faith and credit in June.
Okay.
And then next year, the debt service will, will be like the bond debt service. There'll be a payment in December and then another one in June.
Okay.
So it'll follow the same pattern as that.
Okay, that's why it's, and it's, that's why it's on that line.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions?
Not yet, but I'll come find you at some point.
Yes, you know where I'm at.
I know, I know. I got to learn.
All right. And then I'm just going to roll right into the full faith and credit. Not a lot to say here. We got the one bid in from Cashmere. The interest rate is 6.5. It was a little bit higher than what I thought it was going to be. But at this point, bakers can't be choosers. That's kind of how I'm feeling about it. And we did send you guys this document so you can review it further. There's the, the second where it says term sheet. That's actually the bid that Cashmere submitted in for that. There were two other banks that were kind of looking like they might bid, but then at the end, they, they just backed out and said they weren't interested yet. And then the exhibits following that, there's one for the five-year amortization and it goes through the, all of the interest rate information and then the debt service schedule that you can see there. And so the debt service on the five-year is about 1.4 million a year. And then the debt service on the seven is just a little bit over a year. And so that's what those schedules are. And I think in Joseph's.
Sorry, you mean a little bit over a million?
Excuse me?
Just that last sentence. We used it a little over a year. Did that?
No, it'll be a little over a million.
A million, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that is, that is about it. There isn't really much else to share about that other than Cashmere was our only, only option.
Can you go back to the top just for a second? I just had one question there.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so fixed rate, obviously, it's going to stay at 6.5. So that's the same for both of the loans. Maybe it was one down. Maybe one more page down. I thought something said. Sorry, I don't want to hold you up. That's okay. It'll come back to me.
Okay. Did you have a question, Dan?
Yeah, there's no penalty for paying early, correct?
No. No. We can, like, we could pay the whole thing off early if we wanted to do kind of like you can do with your mortgage where you pay, like, if we have a year that we feel like we have, like, an extra half a million that we want to pay toward it, we can do that. And then it would, they would recycle it and then our payments would go down. And our interest costs would go down at that point. So no, no penalties at all for anything like that.
So it's, I know that we need to do this. It's, it's a bummer, but we need to do it. Is my math, approximate math, correct? That, that average, according, I'm looking at the, the bond summary statistics and the, what does it say? It's bond summary statistics. It talks about total debt service and it talks about average annual debt service. And I took that average annual amount and just divided it. And so we're talking, we're really talking about $85,998 a month for debt service. Is that right? Because you would divide it.
That's probably right if you're talking a million a year.
Yeah.
That's probably right, if you're talking a million a year, a little over a million a year.
Yeah. Well, there's every reason to get rid of that as soon as we can.
Yes, I agree.
Yes. Okay, so I guess that, maybe that's where I had the question. So it says maximum
annual debt service, and it has that same amount of 1.4 million as average annual debt service? So just, I mean, I think that was essentially what you asked, was there's no penalty for paying. That's not a limit of what we can pay back. That's just, not sure why that.
Yeah, so that would be on the five-year, the 1.4 million. And that's the maximum that we would be obligated to pay on the five-year.
Okay, so that's why that's the same as the average. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we're gonna move ahead. We're gonna keep going. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Sherry.
Yep.
I actually do want to clarify, Sherry, really quick, that when we get back to Russell on the 2140 line, the psychologists are ours, so that zero is a question, not contracted. So we'll look into it and get back to you. Yeah.
It's possible that when they were put into the payroll system, the function
They've just been coded wrong.
...
Yeah.
Potentially. So we would just need to recode that.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we are now moving on to our recurring reports. We will start with OSCEA report. We have James Johnson with us this evening.
Okay. Well, over at Bellevue, they're giving a shout-out for their EAs for being fantastic, and particularly for their three general education EAs, Kathy Olson, Mia Peterson, and Michelle Ogier, for their flexibility, expertise in working with multiple-age groups, supporting academic groups, and supervision each day. Christine McCollum would also like to recognize their student advocate, Julie Claycomb, for all the support she provides every day to their students with the highest needs, as well as supporting teachers and the rest of the EA staff on the daily. Christine is very happy to sing all their praises, and they are a fabulous bunch. Kathy Olson, who was an AMS EA and is now over at Bellevue, she was describing how different it is. She's now literally in 15 different places every day, from as little as 15 minutes for up to an hour in a classroom. She also mentioned, she knows the teachers better than the other EAs because they're all spread so thin and they barely see each other. But she likes her job. She gets hugs every day. She did not mention if it was from the teachers or the students. She teaches how to tie shoes and problem-solving. She hands out Band-Aids. She also gets to share in their excitement about rainbows, geese flying south, loose teeth, and light-up shoes. There we go. Over at Hellman, they're also very proud of their eighteen, keeping the kids safe at recess and helping academics. The kids love to talk with the EAs there and feel a real connection to them. Kristi Lawson, Hellman's student advocate, has started a couple of programs that are quite amazing. She started the Hellman Running Club, where students meet 25 minutes before school to run the track, and their distance is recorded throughout the year. Some of these kids accumulate an insane number of miles by the end of the year and really learn to love running and physical activity as a result. She also runs the junior coaches, let me do a page turn here, program, in which fifth-grade students help at recess to oversee games and assist younger students at recess. These junior coaches really help, the junior coaches program really helps them model and practice setting a good example, being responsible, and working with their peers in a positive way. Arianna King, the office manager there, wanted to recognize someone who's not a classified employee. In fact, they're not even employee of the district at all, but he is the son of a long-term retired classified employee, so we thought he would be an honorary classified. That's Officer Michael Bates for being helpful there lately. Especially recovering a stolen bike and working with a student who presents a lot of challenging behavior, including lunch with a student at school and a few home visits. She's not sure she can give him enough credit for everything he does. All right. And over at Walker, Shannon with the Walker PTO expends extra thanks to custodian Jeremy for being such a big help in their annual fall festival. Over at AMS, Obob started up again under the direction of Debbie Larson, the technical service coordinator in the library, hoping to repeat last year's state championship. Debbie also just finished coordinating the all-day photo shoot and retake day for IDs and yearbook photos for students, staff, and one very large plushy bear named Ursula Brown. While Ashland High School just finished their scavenger hunt with SOU, AMS has just chosen their team and has their first meeting, had their first meeting this afternoon, coached by me, there's one of them over there. This is my second year. The middle school hunt will be the second week of December. And while the actors are rehearsing their lines for musical in December, I'm also supervising a merry band of prop makers, set builders, and costumers in building an elephant-sized nest, a rather large egg, and a spare, shiny tentacled fans, and more. This week, they were also learning how to paint, put paint on scenery and not on the floor or on themselves. And last week, when the wind was blowing so much, it knocked over our recycling bins and scattered it all over the rocks area between the gyms and then down onto the track. And it got rained on, so it was also soggy. Abigail, our youth advocate, organized students in the morning before school to pick up everything and refill the bins. Students continued to pick up the campus during lunches, thanks to his encouragement. Also, Cecile Reynolds has organized a black student union to hold a food drive for those who've recently lost other forms of nutritional support here. It's a free United Way. And our IT support technician, Jackson, has been creating AI-generated images and videos to show on a running announcements screen on campus, up-tuning click, well, there's some bad jokes there, too, but he's got videos of a rather realistic bear cub in a football jersey, number 67, running through the field of football players. I don't know how he did it, but it's like it plays. Our principal, Steve Rusloff, would love to recognize their office staff, Karen, Carrie, and Erica, for creating such a welcoming atmosphere for students, families, and visitors each and every day. They're so often the first point of contact for our community, and their warmth and professionalism set such a positive tone for our entire school. He also wants to give a shout-out to all the educational systems there at AMS. They've been doing incredible work, building positive relationships and connections with students. He sees EAs all over campus, visiting and connecting with students during school and after school and at lunch, as well as EAs, as well as the AMS EAs that have been invaluable in their support with students in classrooms and teachers on their teams. They've gotten the year off to a good start. He'd also like to give a shout-out to the tech and maintenance department district-wide. Was that me? Yeah, that was him. I just copied his. So much of what they do happens behind the scenes, but their work has a huge impact. They're keeping up systems running, classrooms functional, facilities safe and welcoming, and they respond with incredible speed to just about any issue we have. They truly support all students and staff in ways that often go unseen but are deeply appreciated. Ashland High School also gives a shout-out to its IT staff, custodians and maintenance crew, for all the essential work they do to keep the high school and other schools running smoothly. They recognize the dedication, expertise, and behind-the-scenes efforts they all perform daily to ensure our students and staff are safe, clean, and connected environment in which to learn and grow. Over at maintenance, David and one other worker came over during lunches and helped clean, pick up all that wet recycling. He's also been quite busy lately with all the leaves that have been falling in the parking lots. Quite pretty, the fall colors, but they do tend to clog drains. A couple of weeks ago, students at AMS were conducting unintentional experiments on the effect of wind on airborne balls, as well as where on the roof is a ball trap. Todd and Nathan from maintenance came over within the hour, I mean, I didn't expect them that day, and helped reset the experiment by clearing a number of balls, some old, some new, from the roofs, as well as other interesting things they found, had found their way up there. And that is it.
All right. So now, I'm just curious. I love the scavenger hunt, and I'm wondering how it is adapting to AI. For those of you, I know you guys probably know about this, but it's basically sort of teaching students how to do a very exhaustive internet search to find
And we kind of just, if you Google something, the first thing that pops up is their AI. And can I explain to them, AI is kind of like, the way you average numbers, it takes all the information to average it. And if there's bad stuff out there, it just throws it in there, too. We, and it's in the rules, you can't cite AI as a source for any answer that they give, but it can give you some ideas of where to go look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it sort of changes the background.
So in and of itself, is directly, is not usable, but it's like secondary, tertiary.
Changes the playing field a little bit.
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it may also bring in stuff that's not even related, you know about.
All right. All right. And next up, we have AA report, and Alan Perowski is with us tonight. Welcome.
Thanks. I think I'll have my reports done by AI in the future. Okay, this is the new streamlined report here, so it's gonna go quick. With that said, I am teaching Hamlet next month. Don't shoot the messenger. You'll see there's a theme here when we get down to brass tacks. AHS, the principal job at the high school has been posted, and the process has begun. TCB, which is Taking Care of Business at the high school, continues to be an overwhelming time for some teachers at the high school with large class sizes, so we continue to problem-solve to make that more manageable. At Ashland Connect, we've added another new student this month, continuing our anticipated growth as the year goes on. One-to-one meetings with every student each week are going well. Accountability, student support, and connection are all at the forefront of these meetings. Bellevue says, "We had a great Halloween celebration at school on the 31st. Staff are missing that time in the classroom that we've had for so many years in a row, near the end of October and the beginning of November." I think that's about the different conference schedule. Trails says, "We had a memory-making and community-building all-school Halloween celebration. Similar to the other sites, the impact of less staff is being felt daily on all involved. We are collaborating to make the best use of the staff we have." Walker says, "We've had 25 new students join our Walker Wolf Pack since the beginning of the school year. Larger class sizes and less support staff has led to an increase in problematic behaviors." And Willow Inn says, "Willow Inn students have been enjoying a number of K-8 activities and events, including the pumpkin festival, theatrical performances by the sixth grade, and the annual fall food drive, now in full swing. We continue to be challenged by larger class sizes with limited EA support. Reinstiting these positions that were eliminated last year is in the best interest of students. More adults to help our kids means greater student engagement, improved academic performance, and stronger SEL outcomes." That's it. See, we're getting down to business.
Any questions? I guess I have a question. That's, I mean, that's amazing, 25 new students at Walker. That's great news. Have we seen that across all our schools, or is that unique to Walker? Okay, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but
Right.
Enjoy.
I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you. All right. And next up, we have our student rep report with Milo and Alice.
All right. So we've had a pretty exciting month since we met last. The girls and boys' soccer team made it to playoffs, with the boys making it to quarterfinals and winning their first round of their playoff games at home, which was super exciting, and the biggest turnout I've ever seen for a soccer game. Cross-country girls placed third in state after amazing season recently. The homecoming dance was a huge success, including the game and the parade. And we had especially positive feedback on the rally put on by our leadership class, with some students saying it's the best rally they've seen in multiple years. Basketball tryouts are starting next week, as well as ski team, snowboarding team, and wrestling starting up for the winter. We have a blood drive taking place next week. DECA departs tomorrow for their first competition at OIT. And the theater program has been working very hard to produce The Wizard of Oz, which we can see November 20th through the 22nd, December 4th through the 6th at 7:00 PM, and December 6th at 2:00 PM.
All right. And then our Belonging Committee, which was the group of all of our student leaders of affinity groups and student unions, has been meeting frequently throughout the month, and we have been primarily discussing how to build bridges and strengthen connections between students and staff and students and other students, mainly relying on communicating our needs and what we need out of others. We're also holding a school-wide assembly on the 21st to spread awareness of our affinity, excuse me, affinity groups and cultures at Ashland High. And then we also have a Snap into Action Food Drive happening through the 21st, which is a class competition to see who can bring the most donations out of freshmen through senior. And then our shade sale was put up on the quad, which everyone I've talked to loves and says it brightens the campus and elevates the whole look of the remodel.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Awesome. All right, a lot of good news. Okay, next up, we have board reports. So I will let you guys kick it off. Who wants to start?
I'll start. So it was busy, huh? October's busy. I'm learning that. Okay. I attended the Kelly Clarkson Watch Party way back when. In October, I attended the OSB regional meeting on the 20th, that was here, where board members and then the superintendents were given anticipated budget news from the state legislature, which isn't good news, but it's news. I watched the Mazama versus Grizzly homecoming football game on the 24th. Score was 63-44. Very fun to see our sophomore quarterback throw some amazing passes. Oh, my God, that was so much fun. Caught a cool broadcast on JPR about our culinary arts program led by teacher Marietta Jacques. That was cool. I had no idea that that was going on. It's impressive. It's reaching a lot of students. Very, very impressive. My wife and I walked in the mile race of a very soggy but cheerful monster dash on October 25. Big kudos to our community for spirited participation, and especially to Erica Thompson and her team from the Ashland Schools Foundation. Way to go. Way to make it happen. And speaking of teams, I, same thing, you know, it was so cool to see the boys' soccer team do so well. That's just a blast. And something to be proud of. And also, while my colleagues and I were attending the OSB conference in Portland, we sent texts to each other about the victory for the girls' cross-country team. That was pretty cool, too. So terrific. Closing, I just finished Born a Crime by Trevor Noah. And I continue my own self-edification about school board service in our district. That's it. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I did all those things, too. I want to talk a little bit about enrollment trends. So part of our job as a board is stewarding our long-range vision and strategic planning. I know we have a comprehensive report coming up tonight, but I want to talk about some stuff outside of the district's purview that informs what we're gonna see. So we know if we want to see how many seniors that will graduate in 12 years, we look at how many kindergarteners we have now. But if we want to see how many kindergarteners we're gonna have in five years, we look at birth rates. And last year in Ashland, we had 114 kids born, which is fairly low. The, part of the problem there is that we don't have childcare slots for most of them. So my concern is that folks that live in town may not stay in town of those kids. So it's just something to be aware of. We'll see, we are squarely on our low-case scenario from our demographers forecast. Operationally, as a parent, how I experience that is that in elementary school, we see blended classes, ironically, larger class sizes, as we bring staffing ratios in line with enrollment. In middle school, how we see that is fewer sections of courses that we value. And in high school, it means a possible shift down to 4A athletics as the number of our athletes drops. We're not unusual. Districts across the state are facing this, most notably Corvallis, another very demographically similar town, about twice the size, but they're meeting tonight, coincidentally, to vote on consolidation after they did that in the early 2000s like we did. I think that we are absolutely prepared financially, and I appreciate your work, Dr. Hatrick and Sherry, for that. I'm not sure that we're totally prepared culturally, which I think is a harder shift for us. So I think our challenge is gonna be for all of us together, board, administration, union, city leaders, to manage our contraction deliberately and to collaborate on protecting our educational quality and equity as we adapt to be a smaller district while preserving community stability. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. That was great. I don't have much to add. We all did a lot of the similar things together, the regional meeting. I did get to work with Dr. Hatrick and Sherry on preparing for a presentation at the OSBA, which went quite well. It was nice to share lessons learned over the last couple of years and have it so widely attended and well-received. Finally, I'll make a final shout-out to the cross-country coaches because I got to see their work in action during the Monster Dash as I raced my 13-year-old up and down the mountain. And he put on a little kick of speed at the end to cross the finish line first, but no matter what he tells you, my chip time was one second faster.
All right, thank you, Russell. Yeah, so I also did pretty much all of those same things. We had a lot of really great board activities together this month, which was really actually very nice, especially with two new board members. So we had a lot of sort of community building and really working together. And at the OSBA, which is our annual convention up in Portland, I had the pleasure of being on a panel with Dr. Hatrick and I about superintendent board relations. And so that was really special that we were chosen to do that. There were only three superintendent board chair pairs. The other one was the superintendent and chair from Portland Public Schools. And then the second was the current winner of School Board Member of the Year. So I certainly felt very honored to be included in that group and I honor you as well for getting us there. Thank you. And I think that's about all I have to add. I will thank Dultra for letting us live vicariously through that football game. She was like texting us with every score. And let me tell you, our phones were lighting up, so that was really fun. Yeah, so, all right, I think that's it for Board Report. And so next up, we have Public Comments. Thank you everybody for being patient. I think I have four here tonight, so I will just first just read our reminder. Comments should not include any confidential matters. The board listens but does not engage in discussion during this portion of the meeting. And to ensure everyone has the opportunity to be heard, we limit each speaker to two minutes. So I will bring them up in the order that they were handed to me. So first is Roslyn Bertrand. So we just ask that you state your name and your city of residence and then go ahead. Welcome.
I'm Roslyn and Ashland. My name is Roslyn Bertrand. I am an eighth grader at Ashland Middle School. I started playing the French horn as a sixth grader and am now in wind ensemble. I frequently help out in the band room during the sixth-grade class. I've noticed the sixth graders aren't getting the same experience I had. Not just one class versus two classes, but they can't learn as much when there's twice as many kids. During the previous years, the band has sounded spectacular. Last year, the wind ensemble got the highest level possible out of competition. However, this next year might be different if kids are still struggling with basics. I want kids to love their instrument and to keep playing. If they're constantly having trouble even hitting the notes, it's way less fun. I know this from experience. It's much more enjoyable when you know what you're doing. It's quite possible that next year, kids will drop out of band because they're not enjoying the experience they are getting. If Ashland is going to keep getting superior ratings and providing amazing education of the arts, it is critical that there will be two sixth-grade band classes.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Diana Bertrand. Welcome.
Hi, it's me again. I'm Diana. I have three kids in the Ashland School District and I'm also here for the band issue. We had a survey that was sent out to parents, families, community members, and I just wanted to share a little bit of the feedback that we got. It was a pretty good response. We got responses from, like I said, parents, former students, the director of the Road Valley Symphony, kind of spreading all sorts of different backgrounds. One comment that I have is from Bruce Dresser, who I know is in the band room almost every sixth-grade class. Jennifer Carstensen has been a highly successful band director at Ashland Middle School precisely because she knows how to work with her students to get them to play their best. Introducing the students in sixth grade is a vital part of her system, which is most effective when the classes are split into woodwind and brass percussion groups. This allows her to focus more on individual students and their specific needs based on the instruments they play. This year, for the first time in nearly 20 years, she's been required to start her beginning students in a large group playing all different instruments. Please restore Jennifer's sixth-grade classes so she can teach smaller groups of students and therefore twice as effectively. Marian Robinson, "I'm a former band director from Talent Middle School. I know what the challenges are for a class of beginning band students. Jennifer has been a devoted educator for this district for many years. Don't burn her out with a class of over 50." Amy Cuddy, "I'm not sure of her relationship to the district, but while I understand that the school district faces very tough budget realities, 53 students in a single band class is not the answer. It is not the quality education for which Ashland is known. Thank you for seeking a creative solution." And I don't think I'll have time to read one from Julian Cole, but he is the band director at Grants Pass High School, who got his start at Ashland Middle School a couple of years, several years ago. He's now 23, plays professionally, and has experience with education and wanted to convey that having a group of over 50 kids was not gonna be as effective, especially down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. You can always, if you have more information, you can email us. We will receive that. Thank you. Okay, next up is Jill Rendell.
My name is Jill Rendell. My granddaughter is in the AMS sixth-grade band class with 52 other students. 53 beginning band students in one class with instruments. Since 2004, there have been two grade, two sixth-grade, highly sought-after band classes. I am asking the school board to please reinstate the second, second, the important second class so these eager young musicians can receive the individual instruction and focus required to help them succeed. Jennifer Carstensen is a remarkable teacher, but 53 band students is not a reasonable environment for teaching or learning. The goal here is to create two reasonably-sized classes to begin with the 2025 second trimester at AMS and to be funded each year moving forward, not just this year. Please help continue the wonderful band traditions at AMS, so important to these students and the Ashland community. And like Diana said, we reached out and we received 88 comments from people who were, they were incredibly emotional. And every one of them said that sixth-grade band made a huge impact in their life and they, many have gone on to be in the music profession. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next up, I have Ellie Rendell.
Hi, I am Ellie Rendell. I live in Ashland. And, yeah. Good evening. My name is Ellie. I, I am in the sixth-grade band class. And right now, there are 53 students in the class. It is a lot of chaos and learning music is very important for a child's education because it helps our brains to be more flexible and improves our memory skills and math skills and our motor skills. And I am here to, on behalf of the students that aren't here tonight, to say we know that it would be great if there were to be another class for our individual learning as a group in the AMS band. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Next up, we move on to Superintendent Report with Dr. Joseph Hatrick.
All right, good evening. Thank you. I will begin by reading the presentation that Dr. Otanis, our interim Ashland High School principal, presented for our October Rotary Student of the Month. And it says, "John Baer is an exceptional student whose positivity and energy brighten every classroom he enters. In statistics class, he consistently makes learning fun and engaging, bringing enthusiasm and inspires those around him. John is extremely reliable and responsible, always prepared and ready to participate. His curiosity stands out. He often seeks to understand the bigger picture and how new concepts connect to real-world applications. He never hesitates to share his thinking or explains his reasoning to others, making him a valuable contributor to class discussions. Beyond academics, John exemplifies what it means to be a student athlete. He arrives early to practice, leads by example, and encourages his teammates with unwavering dedication. His work ethic, competitive spirit, and commitment elevate not only his own performance, but also the entire team, helping them become greater than the sum of their parts. Looking ahead, John plans to attend the University of Oregon to study business while continuing his passion for volleyball, both as a player and as a coach for a local club or high school team. His love for the sport, combined with his strong academic foundation in business and math, reflects his drive to succeed in all areas of life. Outside of school, John enjoys working out and spending time with friends, further demonstrating his balanced and motivated approach to life. We are proud to celebrate John Baer as Rotary Student of the Month, a true leader, scholar, and role model." So you may have read a recent article in the Ashland Chronicle or seen the news report on KOBI, but I wanted to publicly share that one of our own AHS students, Elijah Valencia, has received the Stand for Children, Oregon Beat the Odds Scholarship. Did y'all see that? Oh, my heavens, yes. Look it up. This honor provides Eli $5,000 per year towards his college costs and many amazing leadership opportunities. I had the opportunity to work with him last year on a couple DECA projects. He's truly an amazing leader. So congratulations, Eli. Definitely check it out. Also, as every one of you mentioned, I had the honor of attending the Oregon School Board Annual Convention last Thursday through Saturday. It was, it was truly wonderful representing Ashland with you all and particularly fun, and I'll share the titles of the presentations. So two presentations I gave with, with our board chair, and it was Stronger Together: Unlocking the Power of Superintendent Board Partnerships. And then two presentations I gave with Russell Hatch and Sherry Ely, and it was The Fiscal Wake-Up Call: How School Boards Can Lead in Crisis. Yes, we did get to share a lot of learnings that we've had over the last year. And all four sessions were very well-attended. In fact, three of the sessions were full to capacity and they had to lock people out. So that was, that was a lot of fun and an exhausting time, so it's good to be back. Let's see, Ashland, our school district cabinet met with Southern Oregon ESD, a little, I've lost track of time, I think it was last week, just to ensure aligned priorities for the Ashland School District and how the ESD can support us going through the school year. Also, our leadership team welcomed a member of PACE, our district insurance provider, to give a training on risk management and safety protocols just as a way to, to continue to evaluate changing requirements, changing landscape, just to ensure that we're continuing to provide best practices and safety for our staff and our students. Tomorrow, we're conducting our policy work group with a couple of board members so that we can bring 15, I think it's 15 policies to our December board meeting for the consent agenda as we practice our new process for, is it 15? Oh, maybe more. So buckle up. Here we go. It's policy season. Very exciting. We've also initiated our high school search process for the permanent principal. We will have multiple engagement opportunities. High school families should either check their email, but also on the Ashland High School landing page, there is a link to all of the engagement opportunities and key dates that are coming up. So either check the high school landing page or your emails. And finally, and Dultra had alluded to this, school districts in Oregon are currently grappling with the possibility of a 5% reduction in revenues this school year. We remain hopeful that this won't happen. And at this point, I will just continue to keep you all updated about the realities of this as well as engagement opportunities that, you know, if this, if this does look like a reality, opportunities for advocacy to our legislators. So as this, as more information comes out, I'll provide opportunities, well, information and then, like we've done in the past, opportunities for engagement. So there will be a lot of, a lot of opportunities for that. Any questions?
So when, when we went through the hiring process with you, we had some student contribution to that. Was that the case for the principal as well?
Yep. There will be a lot.
All right.
All constituent groups will be involved.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. So next up, we have our ASD Enrollment and Class Size Report for '25-'26, and that will be with April Harrison. Good evening. Good news only, please. No, just kidding.
Okay, so I have a few slides to share with you all. I believe you have received it already, so that is fantastic. So first thing we're gonna do is look at our multi-year comparison, '25-'26. I did, last year, there was a request, so we added pre-COVID numbers to most of these, perfect, to most of these slides. So we added '20, '18, '19, and then the prior three years, '23, '24, '24, '25, and this year. As, these are all as of October 1st. So you can see here that we do have some part-time enrollment, and those are students who are the Willow, some Willowind Homeschool and then Ashland High School has a few options for part-time. We have GOA, some GED, and then homeschool students can take up to three classes. So that's where that part-time number that you see on the enrollment multi-year comparison. On the next slide, we have, now, we're starting to get a lot of years and a lot of data on these slides, so we may want to rethink what these look like next year. But we did go ahead and add '18, '19 to that so that we can see what our enrollment comparisons are. Obviously, have not really gotten back up to pre-COVID, not expected that that will happen. But you can see, what's nice is that blue line there is, is '18, '19, so that helps as a divider between the different schools. So we can see that the high schools fairly, fairly leveled out, I guess you could say. Middle school is still seeing a declining trend in enrollment. Bellevue looks like they've fairly leveled out. Hellman took a little dip there, but leveled out the, for this year and last year, pretty much. Walker is kind of up and down, not really any consistency with that. Ashland Connect and the Level 2 are both very small programs and have been since their inception. Trails is seeing a downward trend as well, just slightly for this year. And then Willowind is seeing an upward trend. So those are all of our different schools.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm assuming that Hellman data, some of that has to do with the redistricting, right? That was, was that between those two years?
Redistricting was done before I got here, so would that have been '23, '24?
My question is about.
My question is about Willow Wind, which is awesome that they're going up. How big is the waitlist still?
The waitlist is not that big, actually. There are a couple grades that don't have any on the waitlist right now, and the others, I believe, is like six is the largest waitlist. So not too many, which is great. Any other questions? Okay. This next one is our snapshot enrollment, snapshot for this year, and it goes down by site, and what you have is your 25-26 totals, and then we've also broken it down full-time to part-time, and then added what we had enrollment for last year. Any questions? There may be some as we go through, so I'll just keep going. So here's our snapshot, our race and ethnicity. This is almost exactly identical to last year, so there's not really been any shifts in any of our race or ethnicity groups. For our special programs, again, these are almost identical to last year, so we've seen no shift there, which is great, because if we're seeing enrollment numbers declining, that would, in my mind, think that the special ed numbers potentially, because those families don't seem to move, and so, but we're staying steady. Almost exact numbers from last year in for our special education, for 504 and for English learners. Okay, so we have some student exits, so these are just, again, our three-year trends. We did not add pre-COVID to these, there's just, some of these slides, there's just no way. So we have our students who left and did not return, so we tried to get as specific as we could on these. On the unknown, and I know that's something that we wanted to look at from last year, is where are these students going? These students are unconfirmed transfers, and so either there was no records request, they said they were moving, they just didn't show up. So we just, we don't know where those are. The good news with that is we did hire someone this year as an attendance liaison, and now that he has his feet under him, these are the students I want him to find, because I want to make sure that they're safe and that they landed somewhere. So that's why there's still an unknown column, but we are working on it.
With these transfers, is there a breakdown of sort of what grades they're transferring out from?
I didn't do that. But I'll make a note.
Yeah, or even just by, you know, elementary, middle, high, you know, sort of those blocks.
So these are our students who graduated or completed, so you can see our classes. And so what we're trying, so having the graph and then below is just the actual numbers, because sometimes it's hard to see the exact numbers. So we had one student each year earn GED, but otherwise, you can see our graduation numbers are slowly declining. Not because our students aren't graduating, but because we have less students. So let's look at class size and teacher loads. Our elementary schools, our K-8 schools, everyone's doing it a little different this year, so this was the best way to share this information with you. So if you can, you can just go look there, and we just went through in every class exactly what their size as of the first day in October. So these are the class sizes that your staff are working with at the elementary levels right now. Well, maybe not right now, it's November, so there might have been a little bit of a shift, but as close as we can get. And I do believe that we were looking at class sizes of around 25, and so you can see that we're not in that for all of them. Interesting, Dan, you mentioned about the birth rate, and I went straight to this and trying to think, okay, if we have classes of 17, 23, like, okay, that's a concern. Okay, so here is a multi-year comparison. We were able to get 18, 19 on this slide. This is very interesting. If you're looking, Bellevue, Hellman, Walker, so I was looking at the 18, 19 numbers, and then I'm looking at our 25, 26 numbers, and it's interesting that they're pretty spot-on. So either we've adjusted accordingly with staffing or whoever that might look, I didn't delve into that for this piece, but I found that quite interesting. And then the Ashland Connect was not around before 18, 19, and Level 2 hadn't started yet either, so that's why those are blank. Okay, so let's move on to the middle school. So these are all of our class sizes by subject, and we were able to throw in 18, 19. Now, I must say that the middle school has changed some ways that they do things, so these numbers can seem to look pretty sporadic sometimes. In some classes, it's because they made a change to the course offerings two years ago, so it looks really jumpy, so it's really hard to compare on this slide. I think the next one's better, but, so we're seeing in all of our classes pretty much downward trends. We do have a wellness, which I think that's the one that was, one of the things that you can see there in 24, 25, that they added a wellness class, so it looks a little bit wonky. But then you've gotten into, so sixth grade's looking like it's declining, but seventh and eighth looks like the classes are going up a little, so I'm not sure what to make of that. Okay, so here's our class sizes, so number of students in a class, so 18, 19, we had less than five sections, there's less than five in there, and now we've got, let's go to 25, 26, there's 11 classes that have less than five, and you can go across and see that same comparison of what do our class, what does that look like at the middle school? You can see here, the average from 18, 19 was 21.4, and now we're at 21.3. So it's, again, interesting that we're pretty spot-on to where we were before. And then you have your highest classes, and those are explained right down below. These do include special ed courses and intervention classes, which would account for some of those really low class sizes.
I have a question, April.
Yes, sir.
What is the lowest grade that we have for folks still in, under open enrollment? Isn't it like seventh grade?
It is.
Currently?
One moment, please. That is, I want to say seventh, seventh, yeah, yep. So that explains that.
Well, this also reflects going down to two teams, correct? Or, well, it was three, but you know how they rebalance the teams?
Yeah.
So there's definitely going to be a shift there.
And then this year, they did something else, too. So now I'm curious, because they added another small, so a really small group. Okay, teacher-student loads. 18, 19, 117, 20, 25, it just so went up a little bit, but again, still kind of staying We had the highest ones, PE, was pretty consistent for prior years. This year, it's social studies, homeroom, and study skills are the largest classes for them, are the largest student loads for the teachers. Okay, moving on to the high school. Average Semester 1 class size by subject, so you can see here the trend, again, we added 18, 19, and then went from 22 to current. And if we're looking again, like our class sizes have English, math, English, it went up a tiny bit, but otherwise, from 18, 19 to now, it's been pretty consistent. Because I'm just comparing to pre-COVID numbers, just from my own curiosity. Health PE numbers actually went down a bit in 9, 10, so we're kind of, I see this as, that's your positive, I see this as positive, we've done something to correct, and we're actually having, from what we were seeing back when we had high enrollment, we're actually seeing that same size of class sizes. I see, that is good news, so there's your good news. Semester 1 class size, this is our multi-year comparison, same thing as we did with the middle school, so these do include any special classes as well, so any classes with less than five, that's probably some of those classes, and you'll see that the highest classes would be, there's independent study classes, and then there's a leadership at Teacher-student loads, we have, our highest one right now is going to be our English and Career in College readiness for this year, but our average in 2018, 19 was 121, and this 25, 26, it's less, it's 118. All right, so where are our kids, where are they going, where are they coming from? So here's our students that are attending on a transfer, so we had some that left, but it was a midsummer, so they were allowed to stay. We had some that were non-residents previous years that came in, so we had, and that was that open enrollment, Dan, that you were asking about, so we have 149 students attending on transfer. With that, we do have an anticipated loss of enrollment, those midsummers, because they've moved out, they won't be with us probably next year, so there's six students that we would lose there, and the open enrollment's going to slowly start going away as those kids age out.
April, I have a quick question. Do we have how many of our Ashland students are going elsewhere under open enrollment?
No.
Okay.
I'll see if I can find out. Okay. Okay, so open enrollment move in, so these are students who moved in that were on a transfer, so they came in on a transfer and now they live here, so we have 105 students, so that's great. I'm happy they were able to find housing. Yeah, any questions on that one? That's pretty easy. Okay, so here's where it gets kind of interesting. So these are students that were accepted, so we accepted, and just so you know, so when I get students in, I accept them. And then we released 42 students. This is a real interesting flip from last year. Last year, we accepted 46. This year, we've only accepted 21, and last year, we released 42, which is exactly the same number. I'm going to explain a little bit on the next slide why, that's why I believe that's happening. So here's our local districts. This is where they are coming from, so this is who we're getting. So when I was telling you that that number of 21 was a lot higher last year, that came to us. Medfords is about the same, Central Point's about the same, Three Rivers, none, those are all pretty much the same. It's Phoenix Talent. Last year, we had 30 come in from Phoenix Talent. They've changed their practices this year, and they're not releasing students like they did. We used to be very much, you know, and that's not happening. So they're, again, everyone's trying to hold on to their enrollment, so.
So when, sorry.
Just to confirm, when we have an inter-district transfer, the district has to release the student to us, and so what we're seeing is we're seeing less releases.
Correct.
Even if a family would like to.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
So when you're talking about that 42 number of students that we're getting, am I on the right side there? Are we tracking those every year, so are those the same students, I guess is what I'm asking?
We're not tracking every year.
Year to year?
This is year to year.
Okay, so that's a new 42 students, different.
Yeah, we've got, we counted on the one slide, we did count the last year and the prior year, and this is just for this current year, so we do not have, am I on the right side here?
So once you've released a student to a different district, they don't have to reapply?
Nope, they're done. And so once they, so that's the other piece with us, too, so we don't really go back that many years, like, so once they are transferred into us, they're ours, we get them until they graduate.
Okay.
Once we let them go, we don't get them back unless they decide they want to come back.
Right, okay, thank you.
Is, may I ask a question? Is there a universal or unified set of criteria for when a transfer is accepted?
So for districts, when they release a student, some districts are starting to go that, they will release students only under a hardship, and there's a specific criteria that must be met to, and we actually are doing that now, too. So I'm not just letting students go, and when families want to leave, they get a call from either myself or the principal, if they're a current in one of our schools, and we try to find out what, how we're not meeting their needs and what we can do to keep them here before I sign off on the release.
And is that?
That's what's happening in.
Phoenix?
Yeah.
As well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, since you're doing essentially ad hoc exit interviews?
Yeah.
Are you able to share any of the trends for why people request transfers?
The overwhelming reason is nothing to do with us, which is, makes me even more sad. It's because, it's because childcare. It's because, well, my child went to childcare in such and such, and so that's where we work, and that's where we, so it's easier for me to drop them off at school there and then go to work and pick them up and bring them back home. That's the biggest reason. See, I went my good news, I'm sorry. Okay, and then.
Well, it should be good news, because we should be able to fix that, right?
We can fix that. There's lots of opportunities to fix that. And then, so released, so we are trying, and I'm starting a list, and we're gleaning through that, because I know you wanted more information on the online public schools. And there was, there's, so we released, we've released 42, and released nine of them to Medfords, seven to Phoenix Talent, and 26 to online. Now, there's, I can't say no to those, so just so you know, I'm not just letting, I can't say no at this point, because we aren't at that 3% threshold. So there's a list of schools that are, online schools, that if a family wants to go, I have to release them unless we hit that 3%. So just know that there has been an increase in wanting to go to.
And for those of us who are slow at math, what would that actual number be?
Oh my gosh, seriously? I don't know.
I mean, are we close, like?
No, we're under 2%.
Okay.
We're not even close.
Thanks.
Yeah. Now, I can deny, if they aren't going to one of those schools, I will deny, because we do have our own online options, so I can deny. So it gets really weird and tricky, and I'm happy to go into more detail with that with all of you at some point, if you want. We are trying to mitigate that with some changes, and I'm going to be asking all of you to potentially put into place with some policies that would protect us from having to release our students, so stay tuned, since it is policy season. And then I'm currently, that is my last slide, I'm currently working on an analysis of the approximately 300 students who are living in this district that are homeschooled. How are we not meeting their needs, and how can we, how can we be their choice? So that's something that my team and I are working on currently.
April, do you do the exit interviews with the online public school transfers as well, even though they're automatic?
Yeah, and I actually try to tell them, well, we have this option and this option, so, and then, I've actually had a few enroll and try it out, and then said, no, it's just doesn't, it's not a fit for us.
And is there a trend, anecdotally, with motivation for why they're transferring into online public school?
April, I just have a question on what this data is representing.
Yeah.
Is this, we released 42 students last year, or is this the cumulative release we've had since IDT, just last year?
For this year.
This specific year, we've released 42 students?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll try to always, these are always going to be the current numbers for what we've released from, over the summer, that's where a lot of them happen. But we're getting them, we get them both ways still. I mean, we're very busy with, which is a lovely thing when we get one that wants to come to us, but we are still, even though it's, in my opinion, getting a little late in the school year to be changing your schools around for your children, we get them almost So on that happy note, any other questions for me, or is there any feedback you'd like? Is there other information you'd like me to share? I'm going to try to clean up some of these slides for the next time, because they're getting really crowded, but any thoughts?
Yeah, I was going to say, April, this was incredibly helpful to see, and to see. Yeah, I was going to say, April, this was incredibly helpful to see, and to see in this format. Is this the first time this information has been released? Is there historical data as well?
This is the first time it's been released, and we do this every year. If you'd like, I can provide you with the prior. This one does look a little different than prior years, because with the change in the way that the schools are doing their blends, it, so anyway, you'll see some changes over the years, but I can share them with you if you'd like.
I think that'd be useful, just particularly when it comes to the transfers, just to see what the trends have been, and which direction they're going in. Thank you.
Okay.
And then just double down on that open enrollment that we would likely be receiving
Yeah.
when it terminates.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, April. Okay, so now we move on to unfinished business, and we have a policy review, policy JFCEB, personal electronic devices, and JFCEB-AR. This is the second read, and Superintendent Hatrick will introduce this.
All right, so this typically would show up in consent agenda as a second read, however, because this is going to be introduced and implemented following winter break, we thought it would be good just to review this publicly. And I don't know what the best means to do that. If you all just want to discuss it, it is in your board packet. For your consideration, really, the only markings in the draft that is in front of you is, the gray language is the amended language from the OSBA template that was provided to us, and the red text is, remind me, additions that we discussed in the work session that has been since applied. So if you'd like, I can walk through the changes, and then perhaps the board just talks through the policy publicly, and then consider adoption. Oh, that would be great, actually. And I'll start talking through it, and then Holly will pull it up. So this is the personal electronic devices policy. I'll read the first paragraph, because that is a complete revision. And it states, "Student personal electronic devices must be powered off and securely stored from the time students enter the school campus until they exit the school campus unless expressly allowed, under the exceptions listed below. Campus refers to all school grounds, buildings, athletic fields, and any location where students are participating in a school-sponsored activity under staff supervision, including field trips. Personal electronic devices can be used when students are not on school grounds and are not under the supervision of school personnel other than a school bus driver." So that is completely edited and revised per our discussion at the last work session. Then, as you go further down, the text that is not highlighted is unchanged from the Oregon School Board Association sample policy. I'll go below. "Personal electronic devices may be kept by students in lockers or backpacks as designated by each school." So that does give each school some latitude based on their ability. "But personal electronic devices are not to be stored on the student's person or in the student's clothing during regular instructional hours." And then, again, on page two, it really spells out the different steps, stages of consequences when students are non-compliant with the policy, and that will be enforced at each school. And then on page three, there was, I do remember this was a discussion. "So students may not use district equipment to access social media, websites while on district property, or at district-sponsored activities unless the access is approved by a district representative. The district will not be liable for information or comments posted by students on social media websites." Does that reflect what you're hoping that remained?
Yeah, so just to clarify, so I think at the work session, we had talked about taking that out and putting it into a different policy that addressed social media, but then it became clear that we didn't actually have any other policies.
Correct.
So we put it back in. So that, if you guys were expecting it not to be there anymore, that's why we ended up putting it back in. So something maybe to think about in the.
In the future, absolutely.
Future, that might be appropriate. Because I actually was talking to a staff member recently, who also mentioned that there is no policy regarding staff use of social media, so that may be something we may want to think about as well. So.
More to come.
Okay, thank you.
And then the final grade out is appeals can be filed with the superintendent or designee. Any questions on the policy itself?
I have one. So we shifted from, so we're covering school grounds on school business, and shifted away from definition of school instructional hours, right? Like, didn't it originally was, it was like instructional hours, like while you're on school time? And now we're talking about while you're on?
Well, it's a bell-to-bell ban per executive order.
Okay.
So it is while on property during instructional hours, so it's kind of both.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I did meet with Dr. Otanis, and he's going to be working with leadership as well about figuring out activities, especially during unstructured times, passing periods, and lunches. So that'll be great as well.
And then we'll see how this goes, but do you foresee any problems, especially with your AR in the, not having it on their person, but in a backpack, close enough to have your earbuds in?
Well, they won't be allowed, so I hope for complete compliance. Hey, now, peanut gallery. It'll be wonderful.
I have this question, comment on this. Wouldn't earbuds be considered electronic device?
It's defined in the policy, yes. So then I'll draw your attention to the AR, and I'll go through the exact same process, although there's only one section that is read. So the AR is just the process to request an exception, and it is all spelled out. The only change that was requested from the OSBA process was, and I'll just read it, "School administration reserves the right to modify or withdraw this exception if circumstances change, if the school, if the use of the device interferes with learning or operations, or if the terms of this exception are not followed. Revocation may occur without prior notice." So with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions, or if the board so chooses a motion. Oh, I will also add that notifications to families will be going out district-wide, both from the district office and at school sites.
And I have a question for our board reps, which is not how you feel about this, but what do you see, what should we be looking out for, for how this is working, whether or not it's working?
I was actually talking in a class I had today about what it was going to look like. And I think we, it is important, we look for, like, student responses to this. So, I mean, if we have no response, that's probably a good thing, but if we have negative responses, we should probably pay attention to those. And then I was also hearing a few teachers speak about how they were a little bit worried that they were going to have to monitor cellphone behavior if it was still near the student. So just keeping, checking in with teachers to see how they feel about this, too.
All right, I will move to adopt JFCEB and the associated AR.
A second?
All in favor? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So I'm just curious, so what you were saying, that includes that they may have the phones with them at lunchtime, but they are not supposed to actually be using them, right? Right? It can be, like, in a backpack, right?
In a backpack.
I mean, is that practically speaking, are people really not pulling out their phones when they're not in classrooms? Just curious. I'm not, no judgment.
I feel like, as of now, people do use them a lot during lunchtime and during passing periods. So we're going to have to pay special attention to those times, and then I think it will be super helpful to have events put on by leadership during those times to
Right.
have students be more engaged.
So so far, you aren't seeing, like, a ground swell of people who are no longer pulling their phones out. Not so much. Okay, thank you. All right, let's see, I'm sorry, I lost track here. I'm on the last page, okay. So our next item is the consolidation engagement process. Did I get that right? So that will be, again, with Superintendent Hatrick.
All right, thank you. So I want to preface this conversation as just that. This is a conversation. When we went through phase one and two last year, it was really to address the crisis, and the financial crisis. And as we talk about, at that point, even phase two, we talked about, do we need to discuss consolidating schools? I want to be clear, and I'm probably going to say this at every slide, this presentation is not about closing schools. This, this presentation is about the process under which I'm recommending the district go through to even consider that. If the district decides to do that, it will not be a superintendent decision. At the end of the day, the superintendent would make a recommendation to the board, but this is not something that would be done in a vacuum. So what I'm doing tonight is talking about the process we'll go through and the rationale behind that. But this is the first step to start gathering some information. And then at the December meeting, hopefully, we'll have enough information to then bring that to the board to talk about what process we want to use going forward. So I just want to make that really clear before I go into this presentation. Can you go ahead and pull that up for me? So just to kind of go back to the start and recap, the challenge that we face is really clear. So I looked at enrollment over just a ten-year span, and our peak enrollment was twenty-nine fifty, and that was twenty-seventeen eighteen. And that was taken from ODE reports. Clearly, that means fewer students means less funding, and our resources are increasingly stretched across multiple sites. That's why we need to look at this. That's why districts across the state are having this conversation tonight. They're having this conversation over months. And I actually feel like we're in a really fortunate, it's strange to say that at the beginning of this conversation, but we're in a fortunate place that we found this deficit that we were facing last year, and we're rebuilding while other districts are making massive cuts. The, the problem is, when we've got so few students spread over so many sites, not only does that mean resources are scarce, but that also means specialists are spread, staff are spread across multiple sites. And so we need to start looking at what that really means. So as we talked last year, this is a phased approach that we've been going through. So my timelines aren't quite, so as you can see, I kind of merged phases together. But this gives you the idea. So phase one was hiring and spending freezes immediately, like day one on the job, it felt like. Reduction in school days, staff reductions, class size increased to an average of twenty-five, that was in phase two. Some sites are now utilizing blended classrooms as a way to get to those average class sizes. As we're in phase two and three, where that broke from two to three is super gray, but now we're really evaluating what is the impact on students, evaluating district organization, looking at facility usage, capacity, considering, considering educational best practices, and then plans for, plans for the future. I think Dan, Dan's report was spot on. We have to figure out what's responsible, not just for the district, but for the community. And then how do we also, I mean, there's an opportunity in there. How do we meet some of the community's needs that actually will help build this district back to where it was? So the purpose of this proposal is truly that, and I'm going to say it again. It is not intended to be a predetermined decision. There is no pointing to one potential solution. This is a framework for a process. And it is an opportunity. I think it's an opportunity for the district and community to evaluate many options and to really engage in a process. So this needs to be data-driven, transparent, and student-centered at every step of the process. We did so much work. I mean, I think we're all, and when I say all, I'm speaking for our staff, for our students, for our families, for the board, everybody. I think we're all still recovering from the work that was done last year. We're exhausted. I want to, I want to make sure that the board hears this, and I know that you have, because even following my, my report last month, there was a strong message from staff that they wanted to make sure that the board understands how hard it is in the classrooms. And when I met with each of you individually, you clarified to me that, yes, you all know how difficult it is day-to-day in the classrooms. Things aren't easy. It is not ideal to face a budget crisis. That is not best for kids. And so we're working through the challenges. That was hard work last year. Now, we're in kind of this growth, struggle, stretch period, so that we can get to what is the solution. And that's what this is. So now we have to examine whether or not the current facility configuration represents the most effective and sustainable model serving students. And I think we all know, this isn't the final answer. So we have to start talking about what's next. So here's the question that I want to ask you all tonight, is are we going to run, are we going to walk? That is really at the heart of it. And so when I say run, should we do an expedited process? Expedited looks like this. Let's work as a, as a community as fast as we can, look at the data as fast as we can, and rip the Band-Aid off, make a decision for the fall of next year. Or do we walk? Do we really take a really slow, methodical process? I mean, they both can be methodical, but the, the walking is, let's extend this process through the spring, through the fall of next year, and slowly rip the Band-Aid off. There's pros and cons to both, and that's what I want to walk us through tonight, is the pros and cons. And this is not an exhaustive list, because, and, and this is what I'm hoping that will happen over time. This is why I want to throw this out to everybody. And then we need to think through, like, there are more pros and cons than just this. So running, this is the, let's, let's rip the Band-Aid off, let's engage as a community, let's figure everything out, and let's see what changes should be made and implement in the fall. That is, we're going to have a much faster financial impact. We've already made some really great strides, but it's time to figure out what cost reductions need to happen. Also, early relief on staffing pressures. We're hearing it from our, from our teaching staff. We hear it all the time in our reports that we need more support in the classrooms. This, a faster process means addressing those needs starting in the fall. It also means if, if, even though the research does support blended classrooms, if that's not what we as a district want, making those shifts as soon as the fall. Clearer direction for families. So having a faster process means we're going to have those answers as soon as March or April, that here is the plan going forward. We're going to engage quickly. It'll be intense, but we will have a plan going forward very soon. It aligns with our enrollment trends. We have the demographers report. Is it, does it tell the future? No, but it definitely is a guide. And I think we have to follow that, because right now, it's spot on. And so we act on those known projections to reduce the risk, and then it demonstrates decisive action. When I was interviewing, the panel interviews, the board, the demand was there. We need action. And so is the action now, or is the action, let's slow down, let's talk, and is the action sixteen months from now? And so those are the questions that I need to ask. I think it's important to put in the room that, as the superintendent, I can make a recommendation tonight of what I think we should do. I'm not interested in that. I want this to be a community decision, because these are community schools. And that's why, on the next couple of slides, I'm going to tell you what comes next. The cons to running would be less time for engagement. It's going to be quick, quick, quick. We will do two weeks of engagement, listening sessions, surveys. It will be, folks, you've got one or two times to do this. Please show up. If you can't make it, I'm sorry, you've missed your chance. So running, it's going to be fast. A much higher emotional impact. The process will feel rushed. It will create frustration. However, it'll also be a shorter window for that emotional impact. However, it'll also be a shorter window for that emotional impact. Compressed timeline, transition planning, so that means transportation, boundaries, staffing. We're going to have to do that quick, and those things do take a while, but there are ways to do it quickly. Does that mean that the people working on it will have to clear their plates of other projects? Yes, but there are ways that that can happen. Perception concerns. It may appear that there are predetermined courses of action despite the transparency. I will say it again, there are not. And then next, limited creative exploration. Less time just means we can't explore all the options. And then walking. The pros to walking, comprehensive engagement. We are going to be thoughtful. We are going to spend some time at each step of the way. We're going to really be able to dig in and think through everything. That's family, staff, partners, community members as much as we can to really dig into what that looks like for engagement. We're going to have more time to really think about facility uses, multiple scenarios, and weigh all of the different options. Smoother transitions around transportation, staffing programs, boundaries, all of that. Long-term vision alignment. This is going to connect facilities plan with strategic goals beyond just two years. So really, where do we want to go as a district to serve our community? And reduce community stress. So slower pacing feels more respectful and thoughtful, although slower pacing to some might also feel like the opposite, that we're not responding to community need. Cons, delayed cost savings. So it really does postpone the financial relief for one additional year. Prolongs uncertainty. It could add additional stress to our staff. So I'll jump to the additional interim cuts. It may require continued reductions in staffing or programs and continue the status quo of where we're at right now. Enrollment decline risk. Perceptions of instability may influence family decisions. My hope would be regardless, our transparent approach would continue to demonstrate that we are taking this seriously and working with our community. Extended anxiety for staff, students, and families. Increasing complexity, shifting conditions require repeated plan updates. The one thing that I think I put in here somewhere, but I'm jumping around, is the financial insecurity. There's still so many unknowns that that does impact the walk, because the plans could change over time as we continue to get more changing news, bad news, maybe good news, but probably bad news from the state and feds. So that's something to keep in mind as well. And so as we talk about next steps, beginning next week, we're going to launch surveys to gather input from community about which process. It's going to start with our staff. So as soon as either Monday or Tuesday, I will be sending out staff surveys. And this is the question, walk or run? I want to know what our staff, what the process they think would be best for our students and our district. It's really important that I hear from our staff first, because they're the ones every single day living and breathing this. So we're going to start with that. Then I will also, before we're on our break next week, we'll be sending a survey out to families as well. So that'll go out to the entire community. It'll be open during the entire break. The timeline for this will be brief. So my hope is that everybody can take time to do it. It will not be a lengthy survey. It'll be very, very targeted. Because when that is done, I want to take some time to gather all the feedback, see what information is there for us. There will not be many open-ended questions because of the time crunch to really identify what the community preferences are and concerns. And then at the December 11th board meeting, I want to bring the results to the board so that we can have a really robust conversation. Because at that time, we need to decide on what path forward for engagement we use. Again, no decisions about consolidation will be made. The decision about process will be made. I just want to make it really, really clear. Oh, gosh, I don't know how to go back. Oh, yeah, I do. Where am I? Thank you so much. There's going to be quite a few data points that I'm also hoping that the team can work, the district team can work on developing between now and the December meeting. So one, the survey results will really guide our discussion. But also, current and projected enrollment, building capacity and usage of our sites, facility conditions. While we don't have an updated long-range facility plan, we do have relevant data that we can at least report on. Educational best practices, future development, and then anything else that the board, this is what I'm hoping we can discuss as soon as I'm done here, of other things that you think might be valuable for that discussion. I can't promise we'll have all of that ready by then, but we can do our best of gathering what we can. And then just finally, I think it's important to just recognize nobody is excited about this process. No superintendent takes a job and says, I would love to just engage about closing schools. No. This is the last thing we want to do. But it's also the board's fiduciary responsibility, superintendents, leadership team, and our educators. We need to be able to best serve our students, and that is also using our resources appropriately. And so we have to start having this conversation so that, again, I'll repeat what I said last year over and over and over, get off this roller coaster, have some sort of stability for our students and for the future of our district. And so we need to have this conversation and see where it leads us. So my commitment, and hopefully it's the board's commitment, is transparency, data-driven decisions, and student-centered values so that we can guide every step of this process. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, especially, I want to make sure that the ask is clear. All I'm asking is, are we going to run or are we going to walk? And are there other data points that would be valuable in leading this discussion in a couple of weeks?
So I'm agnostic as to what is best for us, but what I want to offer is that Corvallis has a really good roadmap for what it looks like to run. And whether or not that works out for them is one thing. We'll find out after tonight. But the other thing is I would really encourage folks that are listening, not just board, but staff, parents, community, to kind of pay attention to how that works out for them. And the question for us, whether it's better to run or walk, I think it will be helpful to watch them.
Absolutely. And hopefully it's helpful to hear that my cabinet also met with their entire team to learn about their process. So we're going to continue to learn from them, and I'm going to keep meeting with them just to learn about their process.
Okay, so just to clarify, so this survey will go out next week, you said? It'll be open for about a week?
Ish, yeah.
And then we will bring this back in December to the next regular board meeting?
Yep.
Okay. This won't be something we vote on, correct? I mean, this is, you're just sort of looking for some guidance.
It doesn't need action, right?
Okay.
But I would look for direction from the board.
Right, exactly. Okay, thank you.
I think it's important to explain that we've already kind of hit that tipping point following enrollment projections. Also, that unfortunately, we'd be, we're being responsible in this position at least discussing this regardless of the financial crisis. We're just looking at the amount of students that we have in our district that are engaging with our public schools. And so we have to make sure that we're serving them as efficiently and effectively and in a fulfilling way as possible. So just as we're communicating with the community at large, I think it's really important to clarify that motivation and the why that we're having this consolidation discussion.
So I provided the board a packet. Do you feel like it articulates that in the packet?
Yeah, I mean, as much information as we can share. I want people to be able to get everything, you know, so that they can see the entire process and all of the reasoning behind it.
Absolutely. So what we'll do, this will not be ready for Monday, but what I will do is put the packet provided to the board in the board packet. And that will be uploaded tomorrow. And then I think what would be really valuable is at some point in the very near future, have a spot on the website for our budget presentations from last year, all of the rationale that's led us to this, phase one, two, and three, as well as this, so that everything's in one spot, too. Do you think that would help as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
And one other thing I'd like is at some point in the process, you know, a really open engagement with solutions from outside. You know, if somebody has an idea that we aren't thinking of, please, we want it. So bring it forward so we can evaluate it.
It was like, my, I think, concern with this packet and with this conversation is we're starting with the assumption that consolidation is the answer. And I will say with the data that I have in front of me, it's not clear to me that consolidation is necessary at this speed, at this time, without more information. So I want to make sure we're not entering this conversation assuming consolidation is the outcome until we have some more of the information available that we need as a board, as families, and as students and the community to really discuss about. So if you don't mind, I'd love to see the slide around what information the board is looking for for this.
The data points?
Yes. I'd like to add for data points for consideration, if it can be gotten by December 11th before we decide on a pathway. It's going to go to April's presentation tonight, some of the trends of our transfers to understand family behavior better. I particularly want to recognize that this past year, we have gone through incredible instability. And instability is really hard for families. So I don't want us to use this year's enrollment numbers as our assumptions would it be like for the future forevermore. I want to be very cautious as we are consuming the data. And since this is the first time seeing this information, I will apologize ahead of time, Dr. Hatrick. I will likely be emailing you with some more data requests to have that robust December conversation.
And I can also pull all of the presentations we've given over the last year, because it has all of the enrollment trends over the last 15 years.
Great.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to know what exists in terms of building capacity and usage. Do we have something that evaluates how efficiently we're utilizing existing facilities and space? Do we have a facilities plan?
Yes, for every site, as well as what classrooms, how many students per class, and what classrooms are not being used. Yeah, we've got all of that.
Okay. I obviously need more information there. Okay.
That's why it's on the list. Yep.
Okay.
And something I'd love to add to the list. You know, we made a lot of changes this year due to our budget crisis. And we haven't understood the impact of those outcomes yet. So what things we're going to be keeping an eye on over the course of this year to see how they're impacting students to know, is blended working, is blended not working? Would love to stay rooted in our overall goals for student outcomes.
One other thing, I guess, just in, if we're thinking of this in terms of an if, and I know that that's where we're at right now. We're beginning the discussion, is a clearly outlined goal for what we're looking for for positive impacts for our kids and families, because that's a rationale for doing this if we're going to do it, is we want to improve people's experience.
I mean, I guess I would just, the one comment maybe I would make just to clarify how I'm looking at this. This is physical, right? I mean, I think we're all looking to maintain programs. This isn't cutting programs. This is merely moving space. And I think, you know, for all of us, certainly, our goal is to continue to offer everything that this district has to offer.
Hopefully more.
And to do it, right, to be able to do it more efficiently so that we can continue to build and grow and do it in the most, you know, efficient and, you know, best practice way to support the students that we do have.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Now, how are you going to leverage your advisory committees and equity committee in this?
All of it will run through them. In fact, our superintendent advisory, they don't know this yet, but they're getting an invite to meet on December 10th. So we'll run through them as well, so. And then our district equity committee will be meeting regularly as well. So both lenses will be, will be running through them, too.
All right. You're still red. You okay? Okay, just checking. All right, thank you, Joseph. And I believe that brings us to announcements and appointments. Oh, no. Oh, shoot, Dan. Oh, my gosh, I almost skipped you. Sorry. One more item, action item. This is important. We have an OSBA election. We will be voting on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee representative for the Southern Region. And we are delighted to announce that our own Dan Ruby has put his name in for this position. So shall I read this? Okay, so the motion would be, do we, do we approve? I think that was the wording. Support, thank you, Dan Ruby for the position of OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position five. I will take a motion to support Dan Ruby.
I move that the Ashland School Board support Dan Ruby for the OSB Legislative Policy Committee, position number five.
Second?
All right, all in favor? You can vote for yourself, I'm pretty sure. Okay. Be it so moved. Thank you. Okay, then that, I believe, then I can read this now, right? Whereas the Ashland School Board is a member of the Oregon School Boards Association, whereas the Oregon School Boards Association requests the Ashland School Board cast its vote for OSBA governance positions, now therefore be it resolved that Ashland School Board supports Daniel Ruby for the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, position five. All right, go Dan. Now I get to move on to announcements and appointments. The board will hold a work session on Thursday, November 20th at 6:30 on Zoom. The work session is scheduled a week earlier than it normally would be due to the Thanksgiving holiday. The next regular session will be held Thursday, December 11th, 2025, beginning at 6:30 PM in City Council chambers right here. So that'll be a good one. We look forward to seeing everybody back again. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.